We're going to start with the, um, committee of the whole meeting. We have already done the pledge of allegiance. Uh, Mr. Martino, would you do a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Wolf. Mrs. Bites?
Here.
Mr. Kurtz?
Here.
Mr. Martino here, and Mr. Ockes O'Neil.
Here.
Mr. Potts?
Here.
Mr. Radkett?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Still here.
Mr. Dowsky?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here. Okay, under procedures for public participation, it's the same for the voting meeting. Um, at the appropriate time, please approach the podium, sign in. I didn't mention it before, but for the committee of the whole meetings and our voting meetings, the public attachments are available at the back of the, uh, back of the room for viewing. Uh, please don't take them, but they are available for viewing as well as on the district website. Um, under announcements, agenda edits, there are, there is one. We're going to move up, um, 12 seat, the junior ROTC program discussion to 6 seat. That way we can move the students along. Uh, there will be an executive session following the committee of the whole to discuss personnel. Um, and as a reminder, uh, next week will be our voting meeting. Um, so it'll be here March 21st at 7:30. Is there any public comment on agenda items? Seen none, uh, let's start with the superintendent's report.
Okay, Mrs. McCausen, please come up. Come on down.
You can stay seated just for a little bit. Well, I'm gonna have Mrs. Nikki Haver come up and explain, um, the program and present the plaque, and then I'm going to call the students up. But I must tell you, you guys are doing an awesome job. You sat for a long time. I wrote my notes down. Hello, my name is Nikki Haverber. I'm an inclusion consultant with Include Me, an initiative of the ARCA PA. It is an honor to be here this evening as a representative of Include Me, an initiative of the ARCA PA, and Michaela's Voice, to dedicate the Keys to Friendship Art mural and plaque to Daniel Boone Middle School and the school board. As part of the Include Me program, students of all abilities at Daniel Boone Middle School Connections Group applied paint with the wheels of wheelchair to create inclusive art in coordination with Michaela's Voice. This art is gifted in celebration. I would like to express a thank you to the school board, Mrs. Rexroom, Mrs. McCausen, Ms. Lemon, who is in a different district, but we had the privilege of starting the project with her. Ms. Benz, the life skills teacher, Mr. Faust, and Mrs. Majors, the connections group facilitators, Kenny McHale Laresh from Michaela's Voice, and Rita Chesko, ex-including ARCA director, and Lenny Roman, the executive director, for the art of making this project possible. A special thank you goes out to the endorsement and funding by the Pennsylvania Department of Education and the Harry Jeanette Wagner Foundation. Lastly, I would like to express a sincere thank you to the students. They developed the Keys to Friendship theme themselves, and they identified the specific keys that demonstrate true friendship. Humorous, caring, acceptance, understanding, loyalty, generosity, love, supportive, honesty, and nice. This piece of art is a wonderful example of friendship, inclusion, and acceptance, and it was a very special project to make, to be a part of as an include me consultant, because of my son Joshua, his friendships, and the school community supports. So I want to thank you and dedicate this plaque to you. And now, the exciting part, the recognition for all the students who participated. So when I call your name, or Mrs. Rexroom calls your name, please come down. Brianna Torres. Mr. Wolf and Mr. Harris, could you come up?
Oh, now we get up.
You can come up. Nathan Lambert. Timmy Hoppenberg. Jack Kalender. Laura Boyer. Amanda Newlin. Abigail Tombley. Shannon. Madison Lomond. Alyssa Bright again. Emily Robinson. Haley Jensen. Okay, so this is Great Frisbee. Now Haley Jensen. Sunny James. Again, I would just like to express a great thank you to Mrs. Nikki K. Becker for bringing this program to our school. We'll put the link to the video on the webpage. I know Jenny tried to share it at a board meeting and the, the sound was off. We'll put the link, so you can see the link. That was me as, as part of the project. And a huge thank you to all of the students who participated, and really bring inclusion to the forefront in our district. I can't thank you enough. So, thank you mom and dad for bringing them tonight. Thank you.
Uh, for all of you that received your presentation, it won't hurt our feelings if you, uh, wanna do something else for the rest of the night.
You would hurt our feelings. You would like it. If you get to the third floor, you're good. You get there, you don't need it. Move it along. Okay, am I on? Okay. Okay, uh. We would like to recognize a soon-to-be, or is he? He's on the way out, so, and he's smiling, so. Brian Doty, come on down. Yeah, I have to say, since I'm new here, when I met Brian, he, he wasn't here. So I was told that we had two high school representatives on the board, and I thought he was the other high school. So when I came over to him, and he was sitting next to, I said, "Hey, what, what grade are you in?" So that's how we met.
Well, just for, uh, for a little bit of background for Brian, uh, you know, Brian was appointed to fill the position vacated by Mrs. Hamel in February of 2014. Um, Brian's committee service included the curriculum instruction committees, facilities, revenue enhancement, policy, and negotiations. Brian ran for a four-year term last year and was re-elected in November of 2015. Uh, around this time, there were two major developments in the Doty household. He and his wife welcomed their first child, Charlotte, and Brian received word that he would be changing employers. The territory Brian would be responsible for in his new position was in the Pittsburgh area. Uh, the demands of regular commuting, regular commuting to Pittsburgh made it difficult for Brian to attend the Canadian board meetings as he would have liked. Uh, Brian and his family will be relocating to the Pittsburgh area sometime this year. Um, I applaud Brian for his service to the voters of Region 3 and for the time and effort expended over the last two years I served with him. Uh, Brian always disagreed politely and was respectful to his fellow board members. His unique presence will be missed on the board. I wish Brian all the best, best of luck to him and his family.
Brian, before you speak, if I could add something. I, I had been board president for about two months when the vacancy occurred, and saw your name, and I had no idea who Brian Doty was. Voted for you on the recommendation of Mr. Kurtz, and Mr. Kurtz, I think you made a good choice. You'll be especially missed at our executive session.
Well, thank you, everybody, and I, I just wanted to mention, I know that everybody's been, uh, been taking a long time up here tonight, but, uh, just briefly, I wanted to say thank you to everybody for teaching me and when I had questions, helping me answer and not making me feel stupid at all, even though, uh, sometimes, you know, things will go right over your head. But it's a lot of information to try to grasp and get a hold of when you first come onto the school board, and there's so much work, time, and effort involved, and, and Billy joked about trying to vote to double our pay, while our pay is zero, so keep voting to double your pay every year, and, uh, good luck in everything that you guys do moving forward. I know that with all the folks that I've served with for the couple of years, that you guys continue to disagree politely and, uh, sometimes vehemently, and that's a good thing, that's how the process is supposed to work, and that's how we get the best situation for our students and for the taxpayers at the same time. So, I, I thank everyone on this board, and I know you guys are doing fast things you can do, uh, for this school district and whole, but thank you.
Hold on, Mike.
Mike and Brian.
And Mr. Harris. Thank you, Brian.
Okay, uh, last part of my report. Junior ROTC, Mr. Helzer, come on down. Where's he gone?
He's gone out.
I thought you were walking out the door for a second. He's taken a long way. Thank you.
Meeting members of the board have brought with me, um, my cadet leadership. I have cadet captain Alrick, and cadet first sergeant Millman, so I'd like to let them be known as well. Thank you. Are we supposed to present questions specifically? We're not sure if that's appropriate.
Well, this is the first time the junior ROTC is being brought here to Daniel Boone, correct?
Okay, so, yes, that's correct.
So this is a new club?
Yes, proposed new club, yes.
Yes. So can you tell us about the junior ROTC, what it does?
I will first and foremost, that, um, Alrick?
I can see, um, the purpose of JROTC is to introduce students to what they can expect after high school, whether it be a job in the military or just something in general. It's to build leadership skills and just discipline among students who greatly kind of development, and, like I said, the board is mostly going to be for career exploration and just benefits student improvement.
Is there a particular branch of the military that's going to be over it, or is it...
As of right now, no, but we have sergeant now in the National Guard, kind of.
Eventually, the process will lead, if this can ever move forward, to become official JROTC, you can apply for recognition through one of the branches, maybe the Army or Marine Corps or Navy, and at that time, they will designate which branch it will come under. At this time, we're keeping the branch neutral, we're keeping both naming the Army, Coast Guard, uh, Air Force, different things that apply to all. We have different people who want to be cadets who are interested in all the different branches, so we are being assisted by sergeant now from the United States Army National Guard. He's volunteering his time to help us learn the drill, ceremony, basic military rules and regs, and leadership, and development of just one of the clubs. So there's no commitment to either getting a branch at this time. We're just trying to do this successfully, while interest in any of these students in the overall community.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? I was, I was in ROTC at... I had it off. There you have it, you just turned it off. I was at ROTC at Trexel University, or as it was known way back when, Trexel Institute of Technology. I thought it was an excellent program. What's the difference between ROTC and junior ROTC?
So junior ROTC as opposed to ROTC. ROTC is where you choose a set branch of the military to become an officer, while JROTC is to instill leadership skills and give a student a general interest of what they can do after high school. So there's no contract that you're signing, it's just to give a student an idea of what they can expect if they're just...
To state this question, typically ROTC is a college-level course. Uh, you learn leadership development typically through scholarships. JROTC is a high school equivalent, uh, so kids can begin learning those skillsets while they are still in high school. Uh, one of the nice things about the JROTC program, if it gets formalized eventually, is that the top two cadets in senior class will automatically move forward, should they want to go in the military, they get full ride scholarships. So down the road, this could be opportunity for two more students leaving Daniel Boone to have full ride scholarships. So, so that's the difference. JROTC is a high school-based course, ROTC is a college-based. I myself am a naval ROTC graduate, uh, went to that at Norfolk State University.
Thank you. Uh, I have one question. I, I went to an open house Saturday at the Valley Forge Military Academy for the Annapolis, West Point, Merchant Marines, National Guard academies. It's a process to get into those schools, and they were very happy when I told them that we were bringing on a junior ROTC program. So is it any part of the program to assist students their junior and senior years in the application process, because it is timely to apply to these schools, because unique recommendations from senators, congressmen, to...
That will be one of the options, if we should move forward and be able to become instead of a club, become an actual ROTC program. Uh, ROTC is also known as Military Science Program, and they have different courses that take ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade, and one of the twelfth grade level courses is a college prep course where they do help apply to the service academies. They also will help apply to other schools. One other benefit is that if the students decide post-high school enlist in the military, then they will be able to enlist in military as a D3 instead of a D1. That's part of the whole program, and ultimately would be to help these kids find those opportunities and others. It is going into the Military Science Program.
But the program could assist students if they wanted to go to a university, which I found out from the assistant superintendent, that it's free to go to West Point or Annapolis.
Yes, it is, absolutely. That's one of the options, if we can instill in the program once it became a full fledged junior ROTC program.
Thank you.
Quick question. So, uh, just for the record, it's officer training, maybe day or junior?
Reserved, officer training.
Thank you. And do you have any sense of the initial? Thank you, Mr. Wilson, for restoring this, I really appreciate it. There's not many services involved here. Um, you have any sense of the initial, if they're just at the school? Just, you know, five, ten? How many organizers you got, like, just to launch it?
Uh, as of right now, we had a total of 16 signatures from the students.
Really? Great. And when will you be meeting, and how frequently, and will you go to field trips? Just give some sort of sense of what we'll be doing for this club.
We have the meeting break group online Mondays and Wednesdays. We have the meeting on Mondays and Wednesdays, just to try and get general interest, give the students an idea of what they can expect from the club. And there's a possibility of going to trips to colleges to show them an actual ROTC program from such a...
Because that has a, uh, ROTC armory to provide.
So, uh, to explore the option of recruiting sort of during the school day, but I'm assuming that as a club, you'll be meeting after school, at a time slot that's...
Yeah, this far, we have been meeting from, from 2:30 until 5:00 on Mondays and Wednesdays for the last four weeks.
Oh, okay.
As far as field trips goes, we, we have a great benefit around here with, um, several military installations quite close, and we're tempted to make contact with them. Uh, Fort Indian Towne Gap, we also have been, um, communication with the Armory, the National Guard Armory in Pittstown. Um, they've offered opportunities for us to come and tend to drill, do some of the training that they're doing, so the guys can have an idea of military functions. So we are looking at a lot of different things in the near future, whether we call them field trip or trips, the students can make over no option, they're not required. All they would have to do is file a piece of paper for like, uh, for the National Guard saying, "Cadet, training, we're not responsible for your twist and ankle." So we are looking at trips, you know, all across the general period, if you guys expose both Navy, Marine Corps, Armory, and the Air Force as well.
I'm so thrilled, I really appreciate it. I applaud the effort, and I hope you'll stay in touch with us in the coming year. Don't lose hope.
Uh, one thing I just want to point out quickly, I've asked the cadets coming here as well, but one of the primary functions of this is to help with leadership and discipline, teamwork, and that's why we wanted them to be here to present as much as they understand the discipline to the board. Um, these guys have been doing a splendid job in the last, it'll be four weeks at the end of this week, we've been getting together. One of the really neatest things that I saw a couple of weeks ago, one of our cadets made a mistake. We exposed them to some things that you do in the military, so oftentimes they made a mistake, maybe do some push-ups, and we got the five push-up thing we're doing, and one student made a blunder, and we dropped him for push-ups in the entire, at that time we had 12 cadets there, they all hit the deck at the same time, even though they weren't required to, because they're already starting with field and committed to a unit and teamwork. So I was really, really impressed with that, with the kids when I did that.
Thank you so much.
How long will it take you to, to get up and running as a club? When, when can you start actually performing some of your, your functions?
Uh, we anticipate, um, we're hoping by the end of this year to have around 20 cadets. We had two new cadets show up today, expressing an interest in asking to pay work for the currency side. My speculation is, but, uh, once we get uniformed, we are currently looking at a uniform, and I have somebody to help us purchase uniforms, a very significant amount, uh, very significant discount. We are hoping by the end of next year to have between 30 and 50 cadets. Once we get that many cadets, we will be able to begin looking for and applying for sponsorship to the military, and the sponsorship will then be able to help, uh, fund the, the full-time ROTC, uh, instructor that will eventually be needed in order to do the Military Science courses in the day as regular classes, like the electric courses. So hopefully by the end of next year, there will be enough cadets involved that they will move forward and...
Okay, I guess I should have rephrased my question, like, to just tell you what just popped in my mind, you can tell me if it's possible. Would it be unrealistic for you to be ready for, to lead out the graduating class?
Now, matter of fact, we emailed this one night this morning. I requested, uh, to be considered to form the Honor Guard and the Honor Platoon for the graduation class this year. I believe that the cadets will be ready to at least provide the honors, the Honor Guard, and they're learning the marching, they're learning lots of the throwing and fast pace, so I think we'd be ready for graduation.
Okay, outstanding.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment? Seen none, curriculum instruction? Mr. Kurtz?
Thank you, Mr. Wolf, which is horrifying, those two. All right, one of the items we discussed in our February meeting was before the recognition, and has already been brought to the board, the Chinese Apple Board, approved. Beyond that, we discussed for a long time, we've been talking about citizens education at Danny Boone High School and morale at Daniel Boone, correct, among at all levels? And I have the thought, I'm sure it will be convenient, we're going to flesh out a little bit more, um, taking a reflective sample of high school seniors and administering the, um, nationalization citizenship exam, let's get into the incoming citizens, about 100 questions, and it would be only small groups determine where our citizens curriculum is really excellent and areas where it's lacking. The citizenship exam is available online and is, what is determined by the US government to be the critical, um, elements that every American citizen should know. So it's just a minor thing, it won't take up, I mean, really much time at all, it would just be a small group of students who would take it, um, and so it's just something to look out for down the pipeline. And three curricular and extracurricular events, we had a very brief discussion on great events that occurred outside of school and during the school day, in connection with that discussion. Then we turned those meetings over to Mr. Knight, a large portion of the meetings, Mr. Knight, to discuss a variety of topics, including early college partnership with RAC, eighth and ninth grade transition, uh, and transitory program, drug prevention, dental medical mat programming, dental medical assessment programming. I brought up alumni recognition, still my hope, we can get alumni wall up to recognize great lums in business, in community, in whatever fields they're in, consultants, users, folks, pools, brand name speakers for the events. 2016, '17 textbook purchases, and we also briefly reflected on how the committee operates and just, um, topics for further consideration. We'll be having our next meeting exactly one week from tonight, in this room, at 6:00 PM.
Any questions for Mr. Kurtz? Any public comment? Seen none, buildings and graphs?
Buildings and grants? Mr. Tardas?
The facilities will be in January, February, and on next meeting will be also be next Monday, March 20th, six o'clock, and there will be library features behind this room. Any in public or in the comments?
Thank you. Any board comment? Public comment on buildings and grants? Seeing none. Finance? Mr. Martino?
Looking at the agenda, there are several things that we voted on at the voting meeting. Approving annual stipends to fire companies, five per capita tax exaggerations, an agreement with People Admin Incorporated at a cost of $11,825 per year, plus a setup fee, and several other items. But more important, we also want to thank people for certain donations, a donation from the InFaith Community Foundation, David L. Blackwood Memorial Fund, an anonymous donation to the D.V. Middle School Technology Student Association, an anonymous donation of $1,000 to the High School Technology Student Association, and a donation to the A.D.C. Special Revenue from QVC, the Benedict Community Impact Fund. Also, we had a March 3 finance committee meeting, at which RBC Capital made a short-term bond swap presentation, and there were still some questions. Hopefully that was all clarified at the earlier special voting meeting tonight, and the committee voted to move the issue forward to the board. Mr. Small, Mr. Kurtz, and I attended a budget conference in Harrisburg. The conference actually was a little more than a sales pitch for the budget proposed by Governor Wolf. Under ideas to reduce costs, they included reducing travel costs by utilizing school district vehicles for inter-office travel, better monitoring all travel expenses, renewing our agreement with Amity Township on field utilization and fees, hosting sporting and other extracurricular events in our field, controlling Act 48 training, resource sharing with other districts as opposed to duplication of efforts, and looking into the possibility of offering incentivized early retirement, although several past board members spoke against that idea as not being financially beneficial. Mr. Small will review past early retirement actions to determine savings that we, the district had, if any. The SEDEXO performance guarantee was briefly discussed, and Mr. Small has been working on the issue with Mr. Subers. I had written here, will give an update when I've completed this report, but Mr. Subers, our solicitor, recommends that since this may wind up in litigation, that it be held to executive sessions until some stipends need to be made public. The solicitor contract expires on June 30, 2016. The transportation contract expires June 30, 2017. RFPs for both contracts will be issued within the next month. Neither contract has been competitively bid for multiple years. Individual budgets for the principals and administrator departments were discussed, and I've had a brief discussion with Mr. Harris about expanding the use of approved work orders and purchase orders prior to money being spent to assure it's being spent for the purpose it was budgeted, as well as to better track what was spent and why. We also discussed future postings of conference attendees, will include the cost involved, including for administrators. And there was a discussion on withholding our PESR's contributions to the state until a budget is enacted. Mr. Small advised that our next two payments from the state will be received, and I understand that, while I'll turn this over to Mr. Small, they are releasing certain funds later this month, is that correct?
This week.
And it's 900 and some thousand, I believe, in PESR's funds? So without releasing the money, we're obligated to then make our payments.
Thursday of this week, we'll receive our total payment. Subsequent payment will be coming tonight.
And the next finance committee meeting will be 6:00 p.m. on April 7.
Thank you, Mr. Martino. Any board discussion questions? Any public comment? Seeing none. Move to presentation by board members. Mr. Martino, is there any?
There's a lot, a lot in there. So, you know, we have the, I don't think anybody had any questions on that. People Admin, I know I was kind of the one that kind of brought the whole thing up with the new, the new contract piece that came in there. Now it's, they brought the annual increase down to 4.5%, but it's still automatic built in. And actually, Mr. Small, I had one other question earlier than Mr. Subers, because I was reading the termination clause in here, and it does read that, I think the exact sentence here...
Paragraph three?
Yeah, paragraph three. And it says you only have a 90-day written notification, but my concern was, it says, "Such termination to be effective at the end of the initial term or any middle term." Our term is 63 months. So it's saying, once we sign this or lock in for 63 months, and we cannot cancel for any reason, except for if there's a, I think they have a term in here for if their funds are unadmissible, I think this is what they have. Many, in the event that previous allocated funds become unadmissible for the involved or similar products, customer may terminate this agreement without penalty upon 45 days of renewals at the beginning of each fiscal year. So that seems to be the only, if I'm reading that correctly, that seems to be the only clause to terminate contract, that also lock in for 63 months, and that 90 days notice will only apply to him in that period. Is that, did I interpret that correctly?
Let me add on to this question before you respond, Mr. Small. I thought we were doing away with contracts that had automatic renewals.
Well, with this one, it's a five-year deal. If we did it annually, it would be, if my memory serves Mr. Smart, I believe, an 8% increase?
Correct, yeah, so 8%. The contract will not actually auto-renew at the end of the five, five years. It will require written consent of the district initially, what Mr. Rattke referenced in 45 days. That's what we asked them to include, to allow us to opt out every year. So every year we have 45-day period to terminate contracts, we do not wish to allocate funds to that group. At the end of the initial term, no, the contract will not auto-renew. It requires, and I do the Latin language, that the contract will not renew without written consent of both parties.
The question is, what's the definition of initial term? If you look at the front page where it speaks to contract term of 63 months, it doesn't, it doesn't call it the initial term there. Then they refer to the initial term in an automatic renewal for successive one-year terms. I think that's what the confusion is. What do they mean by initial term? If they're speaking to the initial three months, a prorated term, that perhaps is their, I think that's the clarification that needs to be made as it relates to this renewal. Can we get that to Fox Rock Charlie, and then clean it up?
I may be confusing this with another item, but isn't this the item that, I understand that the IU was getting a federal rate there we were?
Well, the IU, I believe the difference is there that they're doing the annual, and I don't think the IU, shall we say, realizes that there's an automatic increase every year. So if they renew it, they'll have to pay that 8% renewal upon such decision to use it. But yes, Mark recognized the same program that the IU is starting to use as well. So I also had a question on, I guess actually this will go to Mr. Tardas, the BCTC General So I was looking over their budget summary, and they are projecting an increase in PESR's employer contributions, which we all know is, is coming, mapped out for some years. Their holding increase to the BCTC will be roughly over $260,000 for this upcoming year. Now, in their, in their, in their funds, they've stocked away a million dollars in fund balance dedicated to PESR's, but they're only tapping in the $50,000 of that. I was just kind of curious as to why they had a rationale, they only took $50,000 and not decided, they take more out of that dedicated reserve.
I can tell you that when, two months ago, when they first showed the draft, I was going to ask that same question, because they didn't have surplus last year, and they put that into a fund balance, and I said, "My board's going to ask me."
You do have, you're third way.
They would be asking the same question, because, you know, you had this money, and you're going to charge us more, and that was what their finance committee recommended and chose us to do, and so I did remember. And I think they did put in $50,000 this year, I think they already gave you orders for some of the next few years. Now, I know Mr. Wolf went last month for me, because I was not there, and that's when they voted on this, I don't know if those are discussed anymore. But I will say, I did ask that question, and I said, "My board's going to ask me that question."
Well, the thought probably of board members, you know, would have wondered why, it says they just dedicated it specifically for PESR's, why more wasn't used. Maybe it was a good rationale, they're saving it up, but that's, if it's there, you would figure that they would have tapped a little more of that, but, okay.
You would think. But I will re, I'll send it, because I agree with they plan on the next few years, but I'll see if I can find that out before Monday's meeting as well, just so we have more of an answer as to what the plan is with that as well. I apologize, and I don't remember off the top of my head.
And my last question, before I ask it, I'll see if I can ask it or not, but as regards to this agreement with the child with disabilities, I had a question on the actual agreement that we have. Should that be an executive session question, or is that askable?
No, it can be executive. Asking an executive.
Yeah, okay. That's before I ask that, but okay. Thank you.
Is there any other questions or comments? Okay. Any other public comment? Seeing none. Two presentations by board members. Mr. Martino, during the secretary of correspondence.
No, I appreciate that, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you. Mr. Rattke, for any...
BCIU, first, the IU is, we're current, actually, on all allocation payments from the state since the budget was passed. The only issue we have is June. So potentially that June payments may be held up due to only receiving, we receive 11 months basically in funding. So June is the only issue we have right now. So obviously, the IU is made out there than the districts in that case. There's also the other issue we might have potentially is that the social security payment from the state, and maybe Mr. Small may well have missed the size myself here, but the state underfunded social security by a month, so we're not quite sure if we're going to get our social security reimbursement for June as well. Folks who might have seen in the papers, the IU has opening seven new pre-getting sites. That's coming from some state funding, and that includes classrooms in Exeter, Hamburg, Hunterreiser, and Brandywine. BCIU will be executing a regular school IU. The First County IU is actually going to help school build an online learning program similar to the First County online. And I think was announced, the last meeting, 46th Annual School Director's Convention is coming up at the BCTC West, that's April 28. And Education Secretary Major Oliver Bear will be screening. And we've also had our, as have us, we've had our annual audit by Herblin. The IU came back with no adjustments or findings. And Mr. Cranwell, I'll leave this to you after the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rattke.
I got the note for you.
Mr. Rattke, let me try to address your social security question. And I think it's an issue that we're going to have to ask our solicitor at the next meeting, and the state, from my understanding, has decided to withhold two months of social security payments and move them into next year. And next year will give us only 10 months, plus the two months they withheld this year. So going forward, they will give us 10 and two each year, and I don't know where they get the legal authority to do that.
Sounds like it's in their favor.
It sounds like a shell game, but, Mr. Small, did I say that correctly, or?
Yeah, that's correct. Somehow they're, I'm not sure when the appropriation bill was actually approved and did this, but that is their plan, to have a two-month lag moving forward for years to come. And no one can answer where they got the authority, or doesn't agree with generally accepted accounting principles to fund in that area. If we tried to delay a payment to a vendor, an ongoing contract, like two months, our order frowned on it, and we'd have a fight here. But EBE seems to be able to get away with it, so it's, obviously, it's a pole of contention with ASBO and they're trying to get answers, but right now, you don't get answers on there for simply done. In addition, we have the land count issue, where when the governor line item, the meat or the budget in December, these land count payments for all districts, such as Danny Boone, has been in the system for years, gets zeroed out. So we're $740,000 short from a cash standpoint. And they'll eventually get that, if there ever is a budget, they'll get it back in. But right now, it needs special appropriation to even be included, as they were to adopt a budget tomorrow.
One of the things I'd like to bring to some, I'll bring it up. There's 500 school districts in California, and if they're going to play these games with us, what will it take for one school district, 10 school districts to stand up and whether it's EBE or whatever we do to get there to follow law? What do we do? Well, they don't fit. I mean, not really.
Remember, by law, they were supposed to have a budget.
I know, yeah. I know. Anyway, that was...
Mr. Martino says, next week when your solicitor's here.
Yeah, I'll ask him. There could be a, I'm sure there are plenty of school districts that might join in and ever to do that. That was topic one, and again, it was one of the things I'll bring me up. Topic number two is about the, what is it, childcare? I don't want to use the wrong term. Pre, no, was it pre-grad? Oh, that was the wrong term then. Sorry, Eric. Yeah, that's right. But I heard you mentioned some of these different locations are going to have offices in, and one of them is Exeter. We have all of this state, so Danny Boone, I don't know if the IU would be interested when it comes time to talk to the programs.
We just talked to the IU about that possibility last week. We're getting our administrative team up to be on that.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so that's a more discussion.
Does that make me another partner for helping these programs?
Thanks. Any other questions? No? I'll do the BCTC meeting report since I attended, Mr. Tardas, he was on vacation. They always highlight a program every month. Fortunately for me, last week, they highlighted the culinary arts, so it was a double treat. It was very interesting. We got to see somebody debone a chicken from beginning to end. I think after watching the process, I just prescribed a buy, but apparently it's cheaper if you do it like that in the restaurant environment. And the student that did it was very, very impressive with his certain knife, knife skills. So it was actually, probably took him about eight minutes to debone and take this thing apart with all its different sections, so. eight minutes to debone and take this thing apart with all its different sections, so it was very, it was interesting, but it's not something I duplicated at home. The big item was.
And then he used the backs of necks for shooting the stock, all your paper.
Yes, he says, he put all this stuff aside, and he said, "Well, that's what we use for it, we're going to make our own chicken stock," so made perfect sense. Obviously, the big item was, BCTC received a $100,000 grant from the state, apparently, these grants are trickling out to the Career Technology Center, so they had prepared a list of equipment that they wanted to quickly purchase and get in, you know, get in-house, so they could have ordered, received, and it'd be available for the next school year, so we did approve the expenditures, and then we also gave them kind of the approval that if they received similar kind of grants from the state, that where the grant were written for a certain purpose, that they could go ahead and start the process of ordering whatever that was, and then we would come back whenever the next meeting was and actually approve, officially approve it. But as long as the items that were being purchased were part of the grant, the grants are coming out without warning, so we didn't want to have to have them wait, lose a whole month from the time that the grants came out to the time the next board revotes, we gave them that approval to start working that way. Also, we did vote on the budget, the budget passed 16 to 0. There was a slight decrease from what was proposed as from the beginning, since there was a tenure teacher, a long tenure teacher that decided to retire, just, you know, without warning, they didn't know, so it was reduced a little bit, because they will be replacing that teacher with a new teacher. Other than that, there are some policy discussions, but nothing beyond that, so, any questions?
I have to go on, but.
Okay, there's no student government report, a legislative report, Mr. Martino?
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Couple things that we don't usually talk about nationally, if elected, several candidates have vowed to repeal common court, and I think the curriculum committee, as well as the administration, should at least consider the potential impact of common court being abolished. I know it's been a controversial item since its inception, so if it were to leave, I don't know how that impacts us. Locally, the Amity Township Supervisors advise us, they don't anticipate substantial residential growth for four to six years, and a member of the Union Township Plan Commission stated that the holders of several building permits have decided to look elsewhere for the immediate future, so with Berthsborough landlocked residentially, future enrollment should be based almost solely on projected birth rates. Back to what we normally discuss, things are still at a standstill in Harrisburg, little or no movement anticipated until at least after the presidential primary election on April 26th. That makes little sense, since most incumbents are running unopposed, and we've now gone 257 days without a completed budget for the newspaper representatives here, and I know this is not your fault, so I'm not pointing fingers, but I really think with the impact of what the state's doing to the 500 school districts across the state, this should be getting more attention in the newspaper. Schools have borrowed close to $8 billion to try to stay open, and even if that money is ever released, there's going to be lawsuits over the interest payments on that billion dollars, which will be considerable. And in fact, when we interviewed Mr. Harris at the superintendent position, we also interviewed a gentleman named Chester Muau, who is a superintendent at the Wielusick School District, and according to this newspaper report, they will not be able to make payroll as of April 25th, 2016. There's also reports of other school districts that are talking about closing their doors, and again, I don't think it's getting enough talk in the paper, I think this should be a front-page item at least once a week of what the state is doing to us locally. You know, they talk about taxes, and even, all I heard for four years from the corporate administration was, "We haven't raised taxes." Well, no, they didn't, they passed that on to the local school boards to have to make that decision. I also have a list here of what's not been accomplished in the 2015-16 legislative session between the governor and the legislature, and this is both sides of this issue, and some of this I heard at a meeting from county commissioner Christian Leinbach, but here's the items that have not been accomplished this year. The 2015-16 budget has not been finalized, and only approximately 47% of the funding's been allocated to school districts, and that was not even distributed fairly. Governor Wolf used his own distribution plan to do that. Worse, the state actually sent out guidelines on closing schools, which I think is reprehensible. The 2016-17 budget's been introduced by the governor, the legislature's already pronounced a deadline arrival. In the meantime, still not knowing when we'll see the rest of our 2015-16 funding, our local 2016-17 budget is still due to be finalized, not later than June 30th of this year. So the state's not living up to their obligations, but telling us we have to. Most of the rest of this came from Mr. Commissioner Leinbach. There's been no final action on pension reform. Peasars, which is one of the biggest cost drivers for all school districts, is approximately $60 billion in debt. There's been no final action on privatizing state stores, which would be an alternative for the state to increasing taxes. There's been no final action to eliminate prevailing wage, which is nothing more than a bone throw to construction units and which increases building projects by more than 30%. There's been no final action on making Pennsylvania a rate-to-work state, which would allow employees to choose whether or not to belong to a union, and there's been no final action to enact paycheck protection, which would end government agency collection of union dues. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Martino. One question, this is actually from Mr. Small, bouncing off something that Mr. Martino admitted. In the absence of our $790,000, $700,000 bank con money, how far can we get this year? When do we start running, when do we run out of money?
We're actually okay in June still, even without the, between the social security lag and the client, it approaches a million dollars, but we still are okay in June, the finance committee meeting in April, we're going to bring forward a recommendation for safety, if necessary, considerations, but as of right now, we're good.
And that's assuming the shenanigan with the social security, two months of social security movement, and not having a bank con, you gotta tell me. Last week, at the Pango Conference in Hershey, it was pretty clear that no matter what challenges were thrown out there, we're not going to see this bank on board the social security resolved in 15, 16 years, it's going to be pushed into next year. In fact, it probably won't, Mr. Martino said, after the election. Okay, so after the election, they've made it June, we'll be a budget together, that isn't even a sure thing, just the additional basic debt funding.
Let me just add, watching the PCN channel the end of last week, the governor and the legislative leaders have not even met since December, so there's no end in sight.
You know, I'm a budget, yet they're pulling a paycheck, maybe that's a solution, that none of them get paid, and they should be sequestered in a building somewhere away from their families until one is developed. But it is getting very, I mean, we're lucky in that, you know, we're going to go as far as we can, but obviously, there's a lot of school districts out there that are in much worse financial situation, straits than we are, and I've heard that there is one towards south of Harrisburg that'll probably not open after Easter, but at some point, they've got to get us out of the middle of this same sick play. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Small.
One point regarding the paychecks, at the supposed budget meeting we went to in Harrisburg on the 3rd, that was discussed in a panel, and currently, we're wrong, but just that it was, most of the legislative, legislative leaders are inherently wealthy and don't care if they didn't get a paycheck, and the other argument is, if they do need their paycheck, and it was withheld, they probably would vote for something they wouldn't otherwise vote for just to get a paycheck, that was their argument.
But along with what Mr. Dodey said earlier, I'm sure the board will be willing to give up our statement.
We'd even give them the glass bowl if they did it, as a budget team. Okay, thank you, Mr. Martino. Student board representative report, this week?
I don't want to spill this coffee. We have had several events happening at the high school at Lincoln, including you guys. We had a spring sports, they're just starting up now, so this is finally spring. We had a pep rally in the winter, and there could be another one in the spring once more sports started to go in. Region Five had VAM, there was also a jazz festival. Region Five chorus is coming up, so that we're looking forward to. Our band department also had spaghetti and sonata to raise money. Region Five orchestra occurred. Our winter sports had an award reception, but honestly, the nineties, this past weekend, we had several teams throughout the district, and two of them are against the two states, one from the high school, and one was Miss Patricia Tinsley, who should be the elementary school, and that's another little story. I have no Zoe Happ, I don't know when Zoe Happ. We did have another team at the high school as well, they played a part, they were amazing as well. Wrestling, Jesse Ang represented us from the States, and he plays seven. Key Club, they had, there's a one, it's really impressive. They had P.I.D. prom this weekend, or it was at State College. Lindsay McGregor is a senior, she was retired from office as the P.I. governor with standing ovation and high honors. Caitlin McGregor, who's her younger sister, was re-elected as the lieutenant governor for all districts, my team north. In addition, Diego Santos, he received the Sandy Miniker Award, which is basically the highest recognition award you can get from the Key Club International, so we're all very, very proud of the high school. The Arts Advisory Committee has displayed district-wide arts in honor of Youth Arts Month, which I'm sure as you guys knows this month. We also had a foreign language speech competition, where all of the different foreign languages competed, and we represented our language, and we had a first-class and third-place winner for a poster, so if you're over at the high school, down by the offices, there's a bulletin board set up, just lay them all to kids' space. The course catalog is online, right when you go to the Dan Moon High School website. Students of Curd, and we raised money. Regional bowling tournament was this past weekend as well. Ethan Rush had the high counting average, he also got Bowler of the Year, which is voted on by the coaches, so for a Dan Moon High School student, once again, it's a huge honor. Tickets for the musical are on sale, it's not till April, but I advise getting them. If you go to dmoon.cyourself.biz, you can order your tickets, and that way you don't have to email and go there anything, you can just go right online. College visits for freshmen, there was a special program through VBEC, basically, VBEC paid for freshmen to go and they got to tour colleges. Alveria College also had a college fair for juniors, and Penn State Leadership, they had a conference at Burke's campus, and we had six boys and six girls get to go to that. Student government, their election's over here in the May, but I thought I'd mention it, because they don't have their national report till May, but if you guys ever have any questions regarding student government, you can ask myself, or you can contact Mr. McKnight with questions. And on a side note, I'd just like to thank Mr. Martino and Mr. Kurtz for wearing a Dan Moon hat. I know it's a weird thing to recognize, but it's always reassuring my students to see some board members supporting them, students, so thank you.
Any questions from this week?
Thank you for bringing guys in my head, but I sent it into wear, it's not, I think you went to uniform, but that's.
You didn't wear one to add 3.04?
No, I didn't, but I know it, I couldn't remember.
Okay. Is there any other questions? Let me give you a brief explanation of the next item here under other reports. Couple times in the past, we've had board members working on things outside of what their normal duties are for their committees, and sometimes, at least for me, it's like, "Oh, I didn't know that person was working on this," or "That they were doing this," and Mrs. Bice has been copying me regularly on her activities, and I thought it would be appropriate, just for Mrs. Bice, to take a couple minutes and provide an overview of what she's working on and why it's important.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have been in correspondence with PASBA, that's our trade group, school association's trade group, on numerous issues, as they survey individual directors for their opinions and comments. One of the initiatives that they held for more second and third was the ESSA Study Group. They are hoping to make recommendations to the state for the, how the state adapts the federal law, which, as you may know, passed in December 2015. It's an acronym for Every Student Succeeds Act, and it governs the country's K-12 public education policy. The law replaced the unpopular predecessor, No Child Left Behind, and modified, but did not eliminate provisions relating to periodic standardized tests given to students, so that's a Wikipedia reference to it. So the PASBA Study Group now is trying to make recommendations to the governor and to the Department of Ed on how we think that ESSA should be interpreted in the state. So I asked to be a part of that study group, and I was declined, so you know that we do pay $11,000 a year, and I was a little upset that I was declined, especially when I found out that it was only a two-to-one ratio of directors, you know, the composition of the committee was 40 directors and 40 non-directors, they were big NPD professionals, and I kind of resent the fact that the PASBA Study Group included people who were not school board members, and what they, the reason why I wasn't selected supposedly was because they wanted to work with people that they had worked with before, which kind of gave me a closed group mentality, or, you know, maybe a head-and-honor mentality, I'm a little, I'm upset. But the four areas that they were, the recommendations for the government and the state are identifying, schools identify as falling into the bottom 5%, assessments, teacher evaluation, and charter school issues and solutions, which are all sort of up for new interpretation. I did send some comments regarding my feelings on that, but I don't know that they were even considered, I don't know anything back. So I guess I just want to say that if there's anyone else in the district that would like to comment on ESSA interpretations, maybe if there's a group in place, a group, among the administrators or teachers or something in any way, I'd be interested in hearing from other people on what their suggestions are, and I'd be glad to forward them along, strictly as comment, because the comment period is still open, and I haven't seen the report yet, but what a paper that was supposed to be created. And I've also been working with the head of the Senate Ed Committee, Mr. Senator Smucker, in this fair, these different comments along the way for saving districts money and just individual thoughts.
Mrs. Bice shared this concern with me, that PSVA, this experience she had, and I thought it was disappointing on PSVAs, and considering we are members who pay $11,000, it's not as if our district, there are a lot of districts who are very much involved with PSVA. For the opportunity for Dan Moon to participate, I would be, would have been nice, and considering we do pay a substantial amount to them, for them to turn down one of our board members, if it didn't, if my understanding is correct, they didn't even have qualifications, it didn't express what they were looking for, it was.
Correct, there was no bios, they didn't ask for anyone who was on a curriculum committee, there was no application process, there was no resume submitted, which just kind of rolled on their heels.
This reminds me a little bit, almost, back, just three years ago, the board voted to submit a proposal. to submit a proposal to P S V A policy writing form in regard to property tax elimination. And this is, we assumed going in, it would be a huge ethical battle, they had to agree to adopt that sort of a policy write, but we went up and really seemed to say, the folks at P S V A who are making the decisions aren't really even interested in hearing our viewpoint. And since they had their view and it was made up, and not even just question, thank you for coming, it was pretty much just writing us off. So, I don't know if it's just an ideological difference, and it's still a problem, disagreeing with our study groups and trying to solicit, would be nice if different opinions, if you have the same people deciding the same things, I really don't understand why we're even considering other members if they're not going to listen to us or even take our views into consideration. So, side note, I don't know if the board would be supportive of maybe Mr. Martino or Mrs. Spite or Mr. Wolf or me as chairman of curriculum committee. Maybe somebody can reach out to PASBA leadership, or the president, or the board directors, just to keep it away from our members who are interested to get involved. And what happens, there are, considering again, who's paying for such a, these sports in a while?
Thank you, Ms. Spite.
Just one good comment, has anybody made the attempt to start a relationship with our regional director?
Darrell Schaefer.
And it was just a little going on, but he looks, he's got a new, got a new director.
I believe, if you're referring to the Darrell Schaefer correspondence, we, I have been in contact with him at least, and I think it's the, I think it's one of the board members, the liaison, as a liaison.
Yeah, I just think that maybe that's a route to take, maybe you try to develop a relationship with them, maybe they absolutely put as far as incoming committees and just type of areas if you guys are reading, kind of cracking the door, instead of trying to get ready to have a competition, but just a call.
For the record, it was actually Nathan Meads who did return my call, because the secretary who sent me the rejection letter didn't want to touch the reasons for it, and I played phone tag with me, and I finally did pin him down, and that was pretty much it. I got the impression that he didn't care what somebody wasn't sure of.
Thank you.
I told Mr. Wolf by one more item quickly and truly this quick, I had the pleasure of attending the B C I U art show, Chicago Works, two days ago, maybe yesterday. And there were many Danville High School art exhibits, and they were all excellent. I think Danville's, you know, especially the men's art out of the, in the entire county. Sadly, no chickens were devolved at the event, however, typical B C I U fashion was not for it. So, and it was excellent, and how did the students, can I defer their work?
I guess while we're on the topic, did, did it sign some folks, Mrs. President, Max Burden from the school? Is that, I think that's, dates on first place? So, and that was all ladies, right? Yeah, so, pretty impressive.
I have a question on the board. I remember when I was in elementary school, we had art shows, and it was a district art show. I don't, I believe there still is a district art show in high school. At the elementary level, are we still doing art shows at the end of the year, putting all the art work up on the walls, inviting the community in to see it? I haven't heard about it as much recently, I think I have before. The art. All right, thank you. Can you get that out before the board?
Okay, is there any public comment on any of the board reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to personnel items listed. Does anybody have any questions or comments? To one item's 11. Okay. Hearing the movement programs, whether monthly enrollment, student data record, which are attachments. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I had a question, I had a question about the enrollment report, then can you clarify exactly how many, Mr. Harris, how many people we, students we actually have registered at River Rock in this location?
It's listed on three four.
Was it 14 out of 45, is that what I saw? Why aren't the rest of them here? What's that, refresh my memory on, well, the ones that come here and take advantage of our contract or lease swap.
Are you talking River Rock? Or?
14. Yeah, but maybe they're all, they're all here in this.
Why aren't they all here? I just.
Regarding to who?
They are.
What do you mean? Not all here.
Isn't it 45 total, and 14 aren't here?
No, it's 14.
No, 14 of them are art. They have 45 students here.
Oh, 45 students, so they're giving us the registration across the whole facility, and 14 of them are our students.
Correct.
So, all of our students that attend River Rock are attending here.
Correct.
Thank you.
One quick question, did we have a final count to date at least on kindergarten enrollment?
Yes. Are you asking me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just checking. I don't know if I can talk or not. Okay, currently, well, as of 3:30 this afternoon, we had 140 new kindergartners enroll. M E C 87 and A E C 53. Thank you. Any other board discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none. Policies? Spite?
Policy committee met earlier tonight at 6 o'clock here, Administration Building. We had a brief meeting, we were waiting for the next set of policies, 200 series to come down from PASBA on the rerate. So, we are trying to clean up some business to get ready for that. Next month, we'll be bringing, we'll be moving five future policies up for discussion, and today we finalized the change, the policy, the 109 resource materials, principles for governance and leadership. And as you recall, that was proposed at the policy level as a, as a policy. It was a, it's a PASBA initiative, we bumped it up, discussed it at the full, board, board said maybe we're interested in it as a mission statement, but we really don't think, you know, we want to adopt it as a policy. So, we discussed it again today, and we figured that it's kind of, it's getting redundant to just put it in our mission statement or whatever, when the policies, the O O O policies very clearly set out principles for, for boards and ethics and leadership. So, we decided to table it. Now, we're open to more discussion on that, if anybody feels passionately about it, but that's the status for now. And we finalized, we did the second readings for 105.2 exemption from instruction and 110 instructional supplies. And next week, we'll be working on the building security one, regarding key access and accountability of keys, and some other miscellaneous items that I'll be happy to replay on after we have that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spite. Any questions? Any public comment on policies? Seeing none, we'll move to transportation. Mr. O'Gusneal?
We met, as the agenda says, on February 23rd, with the board and Mr. Potts. We had a good discussion, bring the board up to speed on what's in the current contract, as Mr. Small indicated at that meeting, essentially, and it was alluded to earlier today, the current transportation policy expires June 30th of 2017. We are trying to R F P this spring, so that we have the, so that we know what the cost of transportation will be in the fall, in preparation for the new budget, essentially. So, ahead of time, we would like to, we'd like to know in advance what it's going to cost us in terms of transportation. So, Mr. Small's currently preparing an R F P. We're having a meeting next Tuesday, the 22nd, here to discuss the R F P process, to make sure that what, that what we all think should be in the R F P is in the R F P, and then assuming that we come to agreement at that time, we'll get the R F P out and see what sort of offers we get. But we're moving forward, trying to, trying to optimize the savings that district, district based on the reimbursement formula, and like I said, there was, it was, there was clear agreement that the best way to do that was to send it out to R F P, and it's been a long time. I think the current contract with the denim has been eight years, so, with the denims has been eight years. It hasn't really been looked at over that time. So, if you have interest in hearing further discussions, like you said, the meeting is next Tuesday, 22nd, here at 6 o'clock.
Any questions for Mr. O'Gusneal? Thank you. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to old business, two items, the budget presentation and the PowerPoint showing pie chart of district expenses, both those with Mr. Small. All right. And the second item is approved, the February 22nd voting, the Mets. Is there any board comment?
Let me make one comment on the actual list of the budget presentation. At this point in time, the preliminary budget's on the website, and until we hear something from the state, little of anything's going to change. Now, at some point, either late May or early June, I guess we're going to have to have a public presentation, I think in late May, because you have to give the public 30 days. So, the best numbers we have at our last meeting in May, we're going to have to make some kind of public presentation.
Are we not making it because of the state budgets?
Because the numbers are so fuzzy at this point, it's really, right, there's not really nothing to present of consequence, because all the numbers are just guesstimates and estimates and.
It may still be in June.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, at that point, we may have to show what we have.
Okay, is there any public comment?
Shane Knuckle, 8:30, your time, right? My question is on the budget. Would the order proposed budget that you have now, is there line items of things that are considered to be cut or not?
Not yet, and that's what Mr. Small referred to earlier, when he said at some point, we're going to have to put forth like a safety net action plan of just what do we do and how do we do it? But right now, our, it includes no line item cuts.
Okay. And I guess you have no idea when you're going to be able to figure out what your potential cuts will be?
I think that's what's going to be discussed April 7.
Okay. My second question, I was going to come up earlier, but when you were talking about running out of money, and you have money until June, you have one large item in your budget, and that's your sports budget. You have an ice hockey team that went out, they won their county championship, that's funded all by the students and the parents, cost them $600 to register, they supply their own equipment, and they look to save money and raise money. You know, they're, they're not renting buses and driving like I pointed out last year, four hours for a game. They pay their fees, and I think the board should really look at the sports budget again and figure out, are you going to, once you run out of money, or if you run out of money, are you going to pay your coaches, or are you going to focus on paying your electric or fuel, heat, air conditioning, teachers, programming? Sports, you know, they're nice to have in a, in a school district, and they, they do serve an important role, but we have to focus mostly on educated, education, and we need to bring back full, you know, full day art, well, full class art, and music, and gym class. We, I think the sports budget, if that money was put back into our budget, or a large part of it, because you still need your athletic director and your secretaries and stuff to focus on, whatever you need to do with your planning sports, if they would turn to clubs, would be, that's okay, would be, I think, the best way to use that money.
Mr. Cop, I need to answer your question tonight, I don't think we have any answers as far as what we would save and what we would put aside. For Mr. Harris's sake, who has only been here a short time, at many meetings from even before I was on the board, you've talked about the impact of sports, but there are other residents, other parents in the district that think sports are as important as, as art. So, it's going to have to be a tight rope walk to decide what we do and what we don't do, and I think right now, everybody up here is hoping that we don't have to make those decisions.
Right.
But come April 7th, we're going to have to at least start planning.
Right, but one thing I've also always pointed out, that the state does not mandate that you run sports, they do mandate that you have to offer art, music, gym, foreign language, math, science, social studies, language arts, et cetera, et cetera. They do not mandate that you need to have a sports program. So, that's just an extra. That's why I always brought it up. Be different if the state mandated that you need to offer sports as part of your budget, you don't need to. That's why I was, you know, it's, it's, it's an easier sell, the public wants sports when you, when you say we don't have money and it's not mandated that we offer it.
I suggest you come on April 7th, and I will be there, I will be there.
Yeah, unfortunately, I mean, we're, we're going to have the same discussions in April that some of these school districts that are struggling to get through next month probably already have. So, yeah, I mean, personally, I think, you know, the education side takes precedence over extracurriculars, whatever they may be. But, you know, is there, what approach do we have to use to get there? What goes first, how can we save money? Is there other ways to save money that doesn't affect the students? That's the first, that's the first thing I would want to look at, what can we do that doesn't affect the students? And then, depending on how long this goes, we're going to be in the same boat as everyone else, and we're going to be making really hard, unpopular decisions. It's a fact.
Well, that's why I was looking at unpopular decisions, would have been helped by how that we could, as I stated, talk about, look at, and try to help the board, like in the past, come up with some solutions and try to help you guys out of this.
It's, I think it's important for the public to understand that, you know, that, you know, the problem has, we're reacting to a problem that we're trying to figure out a solution to, but we have no control over, over the money that we get, so we have the money that we're getting, that we got, and how long, what can we do to, to make it as long as we possibly can without starting to look at, you know, program cuts? Do we start to look at taking out short-term loan, like some other districts have? I mean, there's lots of options before we start, you know.
Before we started banging our heads, we're kind of in a state of the art job.
But what I want to make sure that we're absolutely clear on, these are not cuts that we're recommending, these are not anything, these are what ifs, in how, how we can make it to the end of the year and beyond, in a scenario where we're not getting our, you know, the rest of our, what, 53% of our budget from the state. It's not that we want to cut programs, it's, the school board isn't out to cut programs or, you know, eliminate sports, eliminate music, it's just that we're in full survival mode, you know, coming very shortly. you know, coming very shortly.
Right. Yeah, not, not to go back to my legislative report, but, but the governor and the legislative leader, legislative leaders are playing a very dangerous game of chicken, and it's going to depend who, who winks first. Right now, neither side is winking, but let me ask Mr. Small a question. If our funds are good until June, is, is what we have to determine is how do we get to September for local taxes to start rolling in?
August. Late July, early August, you begin to see your local tax.
So, so we've got to look at a month and a half.
Three to forty-five, you know.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Cockle. Any other public comment?
Close to here. But we still have new business.
Trust me, I'm, I'm in the presentation.
As you can see, there's a Spanish department, students going to Costa Rica that we'll have to, to vote on next, next week. Is there any board comment on, on the new business? You already had your vacation. Any public comments on the business?
Janice, every five oh one meeting, I'm here, talked about the outsourced, for custodial maintenance and grant keeping, this year ago. I've done a lot of research, I've done a lot of reading this weekend, I've read a lot of the proposal. Number one, and it's across the board with almost everything, I read the board goes to this, when negotiations are stopped, it's not the best time for a decision to be made. So, you might want to think about that. Also, do we have any idea how much money the cafeteria, how much money we made closing the, the women in cafeteria? Was there money made there? And where, and where was that put? Okay. This is something they want me to show you, clean image. This is our school on the front, for sure, they did all the schools and colleges, that they served monoxies on the front page, that's how clean it is. And the high school was in the middle. I see it's a three-year proposal, but it's a one year for them to kind of keep Debbie Boone employees. That, you know, identity was very nice. Excepting, like, three different contractors, I don't think that the same, the, as with cafeteria, we are more with the students. Even building grounds, they clean up football games, eleven o'clock at night, they're down there. You think coaches wait till the kids are gone? They don't. The high school, I was third shift on my school, it's used hard. People are coming at eleven-thirty, they're leaving at one o'clock in the morning. We are directly with the students. The badges, it says that they will have badges. Is cafeteria supposed to have badges? If so, who's, who's in charge of that? Coaches that walk in the door. Casey has now implemented, I have a schedule, my alarm goes off when I open the door for an extra activity, my alarm goes off when I'm supposed to lock the door. Why people walk in, they don't have badges. I don't know who they are. Okay. They also do a couple, it's called school dude, right, Casey? That's the, that's not, one of the number one things they'll do when they come in. It's a ticket that makes things faster, more efficient. Casey's already implemented that, which, you know, that's one thing they would do. Okay, I saw it, we'll supply the supplies, Debbie Boone will do supplies. You guys have just purchased trucks, the ASAP computer system where we log in and log out. Now, cafeteria's not using it anymore, if you get rid of us, we're not using it. Only a few people in this district are going to use it. You have spent money on us, the shirts, the trucks are not going to be used by, if you give this to someone. So, I really encourage all of you to, Casey has only been here living every year, Mr. Harris has been here long, to, to go back to negotiating, even if not, really give, Casey didn't walk into a bed of roses here, and now I'm going to leave it at that. He really didn't, but he's changed things. And I know he's going to change more. And that's somewhat what Debbie Boone needs right now in that category. I really, I encourage you not to get rid of us. It is really a safety issue, too. I mean, parents come in, I see grandparents now, of parents, of students I have, and that, you know, some of your employers, at least they're walking around, some of you know. You're going to have new people walking around on football fields at eleven o'clock at night. I've cleaned Mel's office, Mrs. Hapther's office, I've cleaned superintendent's office, I've been in every guidance counselor's office. These are private, personal things. You've got to trust people who come in this district. You really do. I have done, and I'm sure you have, the pros and cons of bringing them. I could stand here and tell you all of them, I'm sure you know it, if you don't, I've looked, I've really researched them. I, you know, I really would ask you to let Casey have time, try, you know, things need to change, and we all know that. But outsourcing, where you're at with negotiations, it says, everything I've read, is not the time to make the decision. And if you're doing it just to make money, it's not going to work. If that's the way the board's going into this, it's not a good idea. I encourage you really to, there's pamphlets, I've printed out a lot of things. Okay, thank you.
Let me just address one thing that you had said. You know, when Nutrition Group took over the cafeteria workers.
Yes.
I think everyone who wanted to stay is still here.
Right.
And the woman who left, who was in the back of the room, that was here when the Nutrition Group, you know, came and was doing their presentation for us, and they, she said, again, this is just her, that, that this company was the greatest company to work for, the people really treat them with respect. I mean, it was, they were really great. I mean, so, it's not always a doom and gloom.
No, no, I agree with you.
So, I mean, and we wrote, and we want to take, you know, we hope, there's a lot of skills here and familiarity with the buildings, and I think the local, the contractor looking to bid on this is obviously going to look at the people already here.
Right.
And do the work of that familiarity, so.
My question, I mean, a lot of, we make competitive wages, and in the second year, we become, you know, they could take the four to six dollars, it really hurts the community. I just, we are very close, we work very closely with the students, and there are some probably that are going to leave if this does happen. I just, I don't like the fact that you would hire three different outfits. That, that I, I don't.
I mean, I also look at it as.
I mean, pardon me, who's in charge of the badges right now? Because cafeteria, we're three-quarters through the year, they don't have, I've not had one coach walk in my building that's in policy, district policy, that they have to have badges. I've not had one coach that had it. He's got, and I'm sure Casey did across the board, I know him, you know, open the door here, lock it here, I have alarms that go off. To be safe, people are walking in, I, it could be, I don't know who they are. They say they're coaches, but who's, I mean, higher up's got to be in charge of the badges.
Yeah, I'd like to interrupt there, just express my frustration that we've been talking about safety here in various degrees for a while, and we were told that there was a group internally handling this stuff. It's really important that we have those badges and identification on everybody in buildings. So, that just brings, again, all the issues happening in the country, that raises some red flags in my mind about what else is going on. So, I really, and I just have to work to get involved with the, the safety stuff, because we've been dealing with that, so I have frustration, but that really concerns me caring about the board.
Would it be someone from Debbie Boone that took, that would watch something like that?
Well, we should.
Or would it be, you know, somebody's got to be, I mean, it's been, I'm sure cafeteria women should have had them, or, you know, they walk into the building.
Thank you, Will. We'll look in, we'll look into that one.
Thank you, very much.
And as far as the negotiations work, we'll continue with our negotiations.
And what you read.
So, we're going to continue with our negotiations. You know, we're not giving up on that, but we also have to look at, you know, when, when so much of our budget is consumed by wage and salary, and we salary and benefits, I mean, we have a responsibility to try to keep as much of the money within the district for education, which is what we're good at, and not necessarily all the other things that go into running a school district. You know, we don't have, you know, we don't have our own busing company, I don't think we ever did. We have great partners that, that service us and provide that service for us, that are with our students every day, they, I'm sure they change, you know, from year to year. It's, it's a fact of life, we have to look at some of these, some of these items that may not be popular, but it's our responsibility to look at some of these things and make decisions.
I have a quick question for Mr. Harris on the safety issue again. This internal community deals with safety, would you possibly be able to send out an invitation to board members to come and sit in on those meetings and participate when they happen? I want to bring it up more publicly, so it's just to make sure to bring out that opportunity. Okay, thanks.
Well, I'm sorry, public can't attend.
No, no, just.
And from the board, so it's him.
I'm sorry, yeah.
And the board members.
From the board, it's fine, it's not public.
So, any other public issues? So, motion to adjourn, motion to adjourn.
Second.
We're going to examine this.